We have promised people different time periods. So, seven o'clock, good evening, I'm Andy Stack, currently Chair of the CA Board of Directors. Welcome everyone to our special work session on advisory committees. Just want to remind everyone to please mute your mic if you're not speaking. When you do speak, state your first name so people know who is speaking. Please be courteous to each other and speak clearly and slowly so that everyone can hear. I am going to take the role of the CA Board. Just so we can get this officially recorded. Janet?
Here.
Shari?
Here.
Ginny?
Here.
Dick? Lynn?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Jess?
Here.
Alan?
Not all there.
Renee?
Here.
Milton? I think I saw Milton. Yep, Milton's there. And Andy, the only one I'm missing right at the moment is Dick. All right, approval of the agendas, a motion to approve the agenda, I think you've all seen it, Dick just joined. It's a work session for advisory committees, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Nancy moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ginny? Any discussion, anybody object? If not, agenda's approved. There was no person to speak out, nobody signed up for it. So let's go right on to the work session topics, and the first one is our medical, is Aquatics Advisory Committee, and Bill Santos is here. Welcome, Bill.
Hi, thank you, Andy.
Thanks for your report.
You're welcome.
Andy, how much time is each committee allocated?
Ten minutes.
Thank you.
Bill, is there anything you want to say real quick before we open up for questions?
Just, I think the report kind of speaks for itself, you know, we are currently in a shutdown mode in most of aquatics. So, as I told my committee compatriots, you know, this is the hardest committee right now or it's the easiest one, depending on your point of view. I wanted just a quick thank you for Alan, Alan Klein, for serving as our liaison, and welcome to Nancy McCourt as our new liaison from the board. So, we'll open up for questions after that.
Okay. Questions, and remember, I remind the board members that we have a chat, so in case I don't happen to see you right in front of me, you can always use the chat box and let me know if you have a question or anything. So, any questions for our Aquatics Advisory Committee?
Yep, I'd like to get in the queue.
Alan, you're first.
Andy, I'd like to also.
Yes, I got it.
Um, as a board, all the advisory committees are considered board advisory committees. And what I'd like to know is what could the board be doing better? Or the organization as a whole be doing better to better utilize the Aquatics Committee as a board advisory committee?
Wow, that's a big question. Just, I think that the board can, I guess, maybe attend more meetings, that's always a good idea to stop by and say hi. We certainly get, Alan, you know, our liaison shows up, but occasionally it's nice to have a board member drop by to be involved. If anything comes up at the board level to communicate it down to us, if there's a specific item that needs to be looked at. I know that the Columbia Association in general has heard a lot from people that the pools have been shut down. If there's anything that the board determines that we should do to help navigate that, that, you know, movement from the people in Columbia, we'd be happy to engage in that, and that's one of the questions that we have open.
Do you think, Bill, that your committee has passed the point now, but would your committee have been amenable to being part of the consideration and/or communication of the outdoor pools decision, for example, this year?
I think that we could have played a role, I think the way that it played out also worked well. It depends on what the expectation of the board is. This is, from my point of perspective, a managed relationship. If you'd like us to join in and provide that perspective, we can do that. If you feel that time is of the essence, or there's a degree of uncertainty that wouldn't allow us to be in there, then I can understand that too. That's kind of a non-answer, and I apologize for that, but we are here to work with you guys and do whatever we can to further aquatics in Columbia.
Thank you.
Okay, Ginny, and then Janet and Shari.
Okay, Bill, two quick questions. One, in terms of the Clippers, how many outdoor pools do you, or in terms of the swimmers, how many outdoor pools do you need for the swim teams?
Well, there are fourteen teams.
Okay, so it's fourteen?
No, no, it's not. It gets a little complicated. We have two neighborhoods, or two villages, that have only one pool. And there are three teams associated with those two villages. So you got fourteen, because those two pools are going to be open anyway, right? Because there are one in each village. And then you'd need the other pool, say, like Running Brook would have to be opened for Dorothy to practice at. So, that's what you're looking at.
So, a total, a total of how many outdoor pools would you need?
Sixteen or seventeen, I'm not sure exactly. I think McGill's and Hobbit's get thrown into the mix here with the River Hill teams practicing during June. And then here's the question that you guys really have to work hard on, if you don't mind me saying it in those terms. If you're going to open seventeen pools, you might as well open twenty-three. Does that make sense?
Could you, when you have time, get us a list of exactly which pools and the rationale for why they should be open next summer? Okay, in terms of the leagues? The second question is the Clippers. We had been working on some proposals that would be better for the Clippers. Is that going through or not? And the last question is, you have in number two bullet under C, focus on indoor pools based through programming changes, I assume that's what you're talking about, the Clippers, I'd like to hear more. Or additional capital projects, what does that mean?
Okay, what we're looking at with respect to the Clippers, the Aquatics Director, Marty, has shared with the Aquatics Advisory Committee a proposed schedule for the different indoor facilities, aquatic facilities. And that showed, I think, all of the Clippers' practices moving to the Swim Center. We have supported that, and I believe it's working its way towards the board. As far as the ability to enact that this fall, I don't know what the schedule is. I have a swimmer, and I think she would really like it if we did. The big thing with that, and I'll let you know as a parent, is that there are times where, under the current practice schedule, you can have one child who has to have practice at the Swim Center and one at Supreme. And you will find Clippers' parents going up and down Broken Island Parkway, trying to meet all of those obligations. And it can get a little hairy sometimes. So, my understanding is that the proposal has been made, staff is working on it, and it should be making its way toward the board. And you should know that the Aquatics Advisory Committee supports that schedule change.
Okay, what about the capital projects, additional capital?
Capital projects refers to, last spring, we had a chance to talk in the middle of the night about a proposed indoor facility. And the outcome of that was not a yes or not a no, but I believe taken under advisement. So, we would like to see where that goes moving forward. And, you know, once again, indoor lap space, even with programming changes, are still at a premium, and the discussion should continue. I don't believe it's been removed from the Aquatics Master Plan, which is one of the guiding documents and one of the charges we have to monitor and advocate for the findings of the Master Plan, so that would continue. And then, you know, to be vague, there may be some other capital projects that may come up in the future, and our advocacy is an important part of our communication with you.
Thank you.
Janet?
Yes, hi. So, one, I was curious, does the Aquatics Committee have representation from the Clippers?
Yeah, well, yes. There is a, the Clippers have a parent advisory board. And one of the members of the Aquatics Advisory Committee that we like to have is somebody from the Clippers' parents who serve on the CAC. It actually works two ways for them. If somebody from the, if a parent from the Clippers team is a representative on the CAC, they get volunteer hours, so it works out well for families. As of right now, I am the only current member of the CAC that has a Clippers swimmer. We've had up to two, sometimes three in the past on the CAC, but we haven't had anybody come forward recently.
So, when Alan asked about getting your input, I was just curious if the board did want to solicit your input and we felt pressed for time, can you give me a sense of like, how quickly, you know, like if you reached out to the advisory committee via email or something, like how quick you could try to solicit that kind of input? You're right, sometimes these are, I mean, especially like this year, it's everything sort of fast, but just curious if you had any sense of that at all?
Well, I believe we're going to try and have our first Google meetup meeting soon. We'll see how that goes. As far as getting the word out to our members and getting word back, most of our communication via email is setting up, you know, times for meetings or things like that. And I have to say that the committee is fairly responsive. If myself or Marty reaches out and says, hey, we'd like to move the meeting from Tuesday to Thursday, we get responses back pretty quick from the majority of the members, so we can turn that around pretty well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, thanks. I mean, I didn't want to pin you down, I was just curious, like if we needed something like in a week, is that, you know, would that be a reasonable timeframe more?
Yeah, I think two days, three days, we could get a majority opinion if needed. You know, and these times we have to be flexible, I think.
Yeah. And so the only final thing I wanted to say was simply, you know, like while I, of course, appreciate and understand that the role of advisory committees is to advocate for their group, you probably are aware that our capital budget has been severely restricted in this fiscal year. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you and therefore the Aquatics Advisory Committee is aware that it's unlikely that any capital expenditures will happen this year, other than those that are absolutely necessary. So, you know, that's just sort of our unfortunate current.
I think we have that understanding, but thank you for the reminder.
Shari?
Shari? Yeah, hi, Bill. I know that the Aquatics Committee really represents sort of the professional swimmers, the serious swimmers, and very much advocates for those who are swimming all the time. And actually, I've heard some very positive things from swimmers in our community about our indoor pools opening. But of course, we got a lot of feedback from the larger community about the outdoor pools. And I'm wondering whether your committee is situated in a way to represent the, I don't know, do we call them the recreational swimmers, the summer swimmers, this much larger group that clearly was very, very touched by what happened this year. What was your kind of feedback, or did you receive any feedback?
We didn't, I didn't receive, or the committee did not receive any direct feedback from the CA community. But all of us, I think, are in the middle of it. And just as a quick aside share, I know my time is short, but when I came on the Aquatics Advisory Committee, people asked me what my interests were, and I told them straight out, tennis balls. Because I'm the guy who likes to splash around, I used to swim, my kids love to swim, my shoulders are completely shot. I'm the guy who likes to be on the deck and having fun, so to let you know that that view is represented every meeting that I'm at.
All right, great. Thanks, Bill.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate the report. We're going to move on next to the Climate Change and Sustainability Advisory Committee Report, and that would be Tim. And Tim, once again, thank you for your committee for the quick report. Anything you want to add real quick?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you, Chairman Stack. It's a pleasure to be with you and the entire board again this evening. And really, it's an honor for us to serve in this capacity. Just real quickly, I just want to, first of all, start off by thanking Ginny Thomas. She's been a regular at our meetings, has really been tremendous for us as we are still learning the ways of CA, and it's been very helpful for us to have her guidance and counsel and support. As well as the support of Jeremy Scharfenberg, CA's Energy Manager. And, you know, that basically, I think, also is a reflection of the leadership that CA has maintained for a number of years on these issues. Both from the standpoint of working actively to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by making greater use of clean energy and energy efficiency, but also in your strategic thinking, you know, it was just a couple of years ago when you all approved, signed on to the We Are Still In Declaration, now more than thirty-five hundred organizations around the country have done that. And the 2019 Strategic Plan that you all adopted, which includes a lot of environmental sustainability and climate elements. And then, one of the things, and this sort of leads us then into some of the things that we did in this past year, just a couple of quick highlights. One was early in the year when we heard from people in the public who were very concerned about the climate emergency. And we developed and prepared for you all on the board, and you all adopted a climate emergency resolution, which is very forward-leaning, and CA was only the third entity in Maryland to adopt such a resolution. Since then, there have been one or two others, I think the most recent one was in Frederick last April. And so I think that really maintains CA's leadership on these issues, and that's really fantastic. I would just add, you know, in addition to doing the emergency declaration this past year, we've continued to also build on the relationships that we began in the previous year. We concluded our engagement tour with CA's Village Boards, and have also convened and worked with other organizations in forming this Howard County Climate Collaborative, which is aimed at fostering greater collaboration with a number of organizations that are focused on these issues. We also began a work on a climate vulnerability assessment, and originally we set out thinking in terms of doing this more broadly throughout Columbia. And when we had an initial scoping meeting last fall with some of CA's staff, both from planning, watershed, and energy management, and in talking with others, it became clear that this is an enormous undertaking, particularly for an advisory body composed of volunteers. So, we really felt it would be appropriate to hone in and begin at a village level and doing a pilot climate vulnerability assessment. And so we've begun to engage with other outside volunteers, folks that are interested in partnering with us on this, because this is not just doing the technical analysis, a lot of this involves community engagement and building relationships and getting feedback and input from people who live in the community. So that was sort of, those are the couple of highlights I just want to touch on, there are a number of other things that are mentioned in the report. But for the coming year, we want to build on what we've begun to do, and we're trying to hone in in a more focused way on some key items. One of which is to do the pilot climate vulnerability assessment that is detailed and elaborated on, both in the report and in the appendix. And we propose doing it in the village of Wild Lake. There are a number of issues in Wild Lake that are emblematic for the kinds of challenges that many villages will face, so we think this would be a good proving ground for this process. And we see some receptivity to folks in the community to doing this kind of effort, and it would be a concerted effort on our part to engage with the community to make that happen. The other thing that we are looking at for the coming year is regenerative landscaping. And again, our committee had begun to do some work on this this past year. In fact, one of our members is working with CA's Open Space Manager on some, it's basically a challenge grant that was awarded by the county to look at doing some test beds, if you will, for testing out different approaches to providing regenerative landscaping. And that can really help reduce significantly the use of fossil fuels and other inputs, and help to improve sustainability and to improve the control of runoff and whatnot from rainfall events. So, we see a lot of interest and enthusiasm in the community for this subject. One of our members has been doing some webinars, most recently yesterday, she led one, Dr. Sarah Vaya did this. And as I understand, I think that there were over three hundred people on that particular webinar. So there's a lot of interest in that subject, and that's something that we think we can help to catalyze, you know, people taking specific actions themselves, as well as entities like CA continuing to move in that direction. And that will have an enormous benefit, both for the climate and sustainability writ large. The other thing I would want to highlight, and it may seem a little counterintuitive at first glance, when we talk about reducing food waste, but the fact of the matter is that some thirty to forty percent of the food that's produced around the world and here in the United States is actually wasted across the supply chain. And when you think about the extensive inputs of energy and fertilizers and all the things that go into growing, cultivating, harvesting, and transporting, distributing, and selling these products, that's a lot of wasted energy. Not only that, so much of those, of that wasted food goes into our landfills, and as it decomposes, it emits methane. And methane is this really a potent greenhouse gas. It can be up to eighty-six times more potent than carbon dioxide, in terms of the punch that it has on contributing to global warming. So, things that we can do to reduce food waste and to help catalyze that could be of enormous benefit, both to the climate and here in the community. And this is based on research by the folks who have done this drawdown analysis. And these are eminent scientists who have really looked at a hundred or so different interventions, and they've identified reducing food waste as one of the most impactful things that we can do. And we think that there's some interesting opportunities here for us to look into that and see what has been done in other places, what some of the best practices might be in other communities that would be fitting for the Columbia context. So that's sort of our aim in carrying that forward, and we think we have some real appetite to do that. So, I don't want to, I won't open it up for questions, so yeah.
Yes, Janet wants to ask some questions, and then Alan.
Yeah, hi, Tim. First, I just wanted to say how impressed I am with what the committee has been able to accomplish. And I just want to thank you for continuing to raise the issues and bring awareness to things so that the board and CA can continue its leadership position, you know, supported by the information, you know, coming and going. Also, I just wanted to mention that, you know, I was also really happy to see that the items that you have here seem very accessible. You know, I think particularly when looking at the regenerative landscaping and the reducing food waste, those are very easy concepts for anyone to appreciate and understand. And then to see how that can help support the environment, I was just really happy to see that. And, you know, so I'm looking for, and actually you sort of answered one of my questions, and that was, I was curious in terms of some of these things, you know, while I think CA will be a good conduit, will the advisory committee be providing kind of, I don't know, checklist or whatever that we can help distribute? But it sounds like maybe some of that will be done through the virtual platform, and, you know, that provides a huge opportunity also. Obviously, three hundred people aren't going to come to a meeting, but they might hop on and, you know, see a webinar. So, maybe that answers the question that I had in the first place.
Alan?
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Alan?
Yeah, I did owe to what Janet said, but my question is, as a CA Board Advisory Committee, short of having us throw a lot more money at the issues, what could the board and/or the staff be doing to better take advantage of your committee's work and advice?
Thank you, Alan, that's a great question. I feel like we've already got a very fluid and constructive, really a great relationship with staff. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we have Jeremy Scharfenberg who works with us day in and day out, but also we've engaged with folks in open space and in other parts of the CA family. You know, I would just say that as you see other issues cropping up, for example, we know now, I've seen the latest news about the issues surrounding Symphony Woods, and there are clearly some environmental issues there. And we, as a committee, have begun to look at that to see if there's something we can do also to be helpful invoicing, from our perspective, concerns about the environment that would help to reinforce the kind of action that CA is taking. And we'll be reaching out, I think, as individuals also to some of our board members as well to try to help reinforce that, because clearly what's happening there is a concern from an environmental perspective, and every little bit helps. I mean, we talk a lot about climate being a global issue, but at the end of the day, it's the actions that we take here at local levels that will make all the difference. And so if Columbia can do its part and CA has been a leader, and, you know, if there are questions that you have of us, you know, discreet questions or whatever that you want us to look into, we're happy to do it. We've got a lot of enthusiastic folks. The challenge that I've got as a chair oftentimes has been to try to bring our focus back to things that are actionable and particularly germane in the CA context, because this really is a target-rich environment when you look at these kinds of issues. I don't know if I answered your question, but...
That was great, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Hi, Tim. As the CA rep from Wild Lake, I'm glad to hear that you're going to be doing this work in Wild Lake, of course. But I also wanted to invite you to come to a board meeting, a Wild Lake board meeting, and to also see if we can get you to write up something for our Wild Lake newsletter. But we can contact on the side.
Thank you, Nancy. I would be delighted. I've been in touch with the Chair of the Wild Lake Village Board, with Kevin. He was very receptive, but I recognize we need to, you know, engage with the full board. And actually, the piece that we have as an attachment to this report, I was planning to send to him and other members of that as well, just to give them a bit more texture for what we're talking about. But before I did that, I really wanted to make sure that this approach was something that you all would be comfortable with. So I didn't want to get too far ahead of you all in advancing that. But I definitely want to engage with, and, you know, bring our team with to engage with the board and others in the community, because at its core, this is a community engagement process. And because it's people who live there who know the issues, who know the real challenges, and we want to help bring that out so we can help identify solutions.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll say, Tim, appreciate you taking time to join us tonight.
A pleasure, thank you.
Questions? We're going to move on next to the Columbia Arts Center Advisory Committee, and we have Barbara Kellner with us tonight. Barbara, welcome. Barbara?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, so, thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I'm always happy to come before the board and on behalf of the Arts Center. I do want to thank Janet for all her attendance at our Arts Center meetings. She was really so helpful to keep the committee up to date on what was happening with the redevelopment and then the cancellation of any plans for the redevelopment. redevelopment and then the cancellation of any plans for the redevelopment. So that was a great, that was a great disappointment, obviously, and we, we did have conversations about that and about, and about the, the future of the Arts Center and how that might be, how, how any improvements to that were going to be made that perhaps wouldn't be as, wouldn't be as helpful as, as they would have been with the, with those plans that were canceled. So all of that was helpful to us. I mean, you have a copy of the report, you know what the Arts Center itself did, and that the advisory committee is, is vital in giving help to the staff with the gallery installations and with jewelrying for the exhibits. And also this year, sadly, the Visionary Women's exhibit had to be canceled due to the pandemic, but there was such a great list of events that were going to accompany that exhibit. And the advisory committee had a lot of input to that, getting sponsors and monetary sponsors as well as partners like the Howard County Library and, and the Community College and working with other CA staffers that had the multicultural exchange program and the archives. So all of that is some of the things that, that did happen. I would just like to take this opportunity to say, don't, don't let the Arts Center get lost in the current crisis. So I'm a strong believer in the value of art in our lives, and it's no more valued than now during this time of crisis. Art has the power to elevate tough conversations, and that's been done with some of the Sol Bond series programming. And art can provide an outlet for feeling so needed at this time and to bring a sense of calm to troubled times. It comes in many forms, listening to poetry or a lecture about art, the opportunity for artists to actually do what they do and to come into the Arts Center. It also helps with being able to, to just participate in these activities. And so I must say, I am a little disappointed that as other CA facilities began to open, the Arts Center didn't get the go-ahead. And CA is a community association and not just a physical fitness association. And I just want to put in a pitch from the Art Advisory Committee that community services should not have to be a stepchild. And I'm looking forward to the Arts Center opening in September, but that's still a long summer where some kids could have enjoyed some activities, some, some other things could have been happening.
Thank you, Barbara. We have some questions, Alan and Jenny. Alan, you're first.
Okay, two questions, Jen, Barbara. Is it your belief or the committee's position that under the current state guidelines, state and county guidelines, the Arts Center could have been legally opened?
Well, I think so because a lot of the classes sizes could, could have been pared down certainly to allow social distancing. Boy, they could have been making masks in one of those workshops.
Put them to work.
Exactly. Because there's a lot of talented people that come in. Yeah, I mean, not, obviously, not all events, not exhibit openings that cram that small space, but, but certainly classes, things could have been done outside.
Okay.
You know, the, the plein air could have been done out, the plein air could certainly have gone on in the planning, but with the reduced staff, that, that just wasn't possible.
Okay. Short, short of getting the issues with the Village Center and all that worked out, what could the board or the staff be doing better to take more advantage of your committee's advice?
Well, as always, which might not be happening so much in the, in the near future, but, you know, attending, attending events would be so beneficial to, to educate what, what good stuff goes on at that Arts Center, as well as, you know, certainly, in addition to Janet, you know, other board members would always be welcome to, to come in and be part of the advisory committee. I think just a little, you know, a little more support in general for the community services aspect of this. You know, I worked for CA for a long time in the same, in the same division, so I come at it from, from a very community-minded spirit.
Thanks. I'll hold my archives questions for later.
Jenny?
I don't know anymore.
Barbara, I share with you and many other people my disappointment in what happened in Longreach. I was really excited about the potential, and it was really a downer. So two, two questions. Are you familiar with what's happening in the new cultural center? I was on a conference call for a couple of hours today on that, where Parks and Rec is apparently wanting to buy in in order to support this new cultural center down at Toby's area, the residential, commercial, arts and entertainment. My concern is, do you see that there's a conflict there or could be duplication or any, any potential problems for what CA is doing or the Inner Arbor Trust is doing? Are we going to have too much duplication than the Arts Center is doing?
Well, this is coming from my personal perspective, because it's not something, it is something that I personally have discussed with, with the manager of the Arts Center. But I have, I believe that moving some of the function of the Arts Center, which is the exhibit function, moving the exhibit function to be part of that cultural center, because it would give the, the exhibits a bigger, you know, a bigger, a big, a bigger audience potentially and, and would gain by being part of this larger cultural center and would, would show how important the Columbia Arts Center is in the Columbia cultural scene. And then the Arts Center, where it is in Longreach, could be devoted to the classes and to, and certainly to the ceramics, which it has this, you know, really state-of-the-art ceramic department. You don't, you don't want to lose that, and that belongs in Longreach. But the exhibit piece, which if, if the arts, if, if Stonehouse and the Arts Center were going to end up seeing some redevelopment, then you could re-figure the space to give more space for classes and, and workshops.
Well, I think Parks is going to compete in ceramics, aren't they?
Well, not to my knowledge to that extent. I, I, no, I have not been part of those conversations. I have obviously followed the story, and I very much support the construction of that facility, because I, I think it would be an asset.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have on my list. Any other last questions for Barbara? If not, thank you, Barbara. Appreciate your coming out to talk with us tonight.
My pleasure.
Next up, we have the Golf and Green Advisory Committee, and we have Keith.
Hill Hill? Not bad. How are you?
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Yes.
Anything you'd like to kind of say for your summary there?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. I always do look forward to coming here every year. You know, the, we had some changes over the last couple of years with a fair amount of staffing that changed. I'm not sure the board is aware. You know, we have had three, we're on our third superintendent, Nick moved over, and then we have Sean for one year, and now Patrick's doing a wonderful job there. We lost our player development person, which was Paul. And then we also lost membership, which was Lorraine. So Joni's there working her butt off, and, and I think that what's been accomplished this year and pulling off the reopening has been a tremendous thing. You know, it brings back all the social bonds and all the, the, the healthy walking and the riding, and hopefully providing some much-needed cost reduction by us paying for our membership. You know, and overall, you know, we're a mature, we're a mature committee. We've been around for a lot of years. We have 15 members. We did have our first meeting since the pandemic started, I guess in about a week or, week or two ago, and we had 19 people in attendance. We have like eight or nine different groups that play. So, and we communicate on Slack, and, you know, overall, it's, I wouldn't say it's back to normal, but it's, you know, we all are being very safe. We all have our dividers, or we all wear our masks, and we, we separate as much as we possibly can. We're all consciously aware. We also all know that we're lucky that we're in an outdoor activity, which allows that. We recognize there's no capital improvements. We recognize there's a reduction in staffing for maintenance and support. We recognize there's no sand in the bunkers, but everyone's just happy to be there and be happy to participating in the sport that we enjoy and the friendships that we have outside. So we're really just, this year, you know, always want to improve the experience and make things better moving forward. And that's kind of the mode that we're in. It's just enjoy the year as best we can and plan for better days.
Thanks, Keith. I see some questions. Alan and Janet. Alan, you're up.
I'll ask the same question of you. As, I know you're a mature committee, but what could the board and/or the staff be doing to better take advantage of your committee's expertise and advice?
I think it's, this works right now. It's been on it for, oh, probably a dozen years, been the chair for a few now. I, I think we're very tight. I think it's, there's a lot of communication that goes on and a lot of information that gets disseminated to the membership through, through the committee and other means. So I think everything is, I think it's been structured really well, and I think it's working really well. So I don't see any...
Thank you.
Janet?
Yes, I, I wanted to ask a question about Fairway Hills. One of your recommendations, well, your recommendation was exploring long-range plans for the driving range. I was just curious, like, overall, what your thoughts on Fairway Hills are. You know, I'm sure you're aware of some of the conversations that have gone on surrounding that one. You know, what do you see making it the most robust that it could be in its current?
Well, the course is the course. You know, we know it's on wetlands, and we've had a couple of bridges go out, and hopefully that's behind us, and the structures will be able to sustain any issues in the future. So the course is the course, and, and it's the amenities and, and the range. You know, it's to make it more enticing, to make it more accessible, to make it more interesting. Now, I know this is very, again, it's long-range plans, so when someone says, what could be better there, it's, you know, that's probably the, the main piece of it. I know that the pavilion went up, I guess, a year or so ago or two years ago, which has helped with the outings and also other events. And then, and then there's the budding green, and then there's the range, and that's, and then the house, you know, the clubhouse. So I think the range is probably the one that is the eldest and, you know, it's just, it looks like just a normal range. It's not super enticing, and it not, probably could be useful for more instruction than just be at this stage.
And what do you feel would be the impact, say, if we made it a nine-hole course instead of a four?
I don't know. I don't know the studies of that. Sorry, I can't answer.
Thank you. And just my final question, how do you say your last name?
I O V I.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, the I is long.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Golf and Green Advisory Committee? No, thank you, Keith. Appreciate your, your coming out to talk with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
So next, we're going to move on to the Health and Fitness Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, the rep had a last-minute difficulty, could not join us, but Dan is here to kind of fill in. So, Dan, is there anything you want to say about the committee report?
Well, I just want to, I'll just say that I think the committee's done a great job. You know, there was a lot going on in the fitness areas in the last couple of years with the renovations and adding new programming and the Clara Bridge surveys and getting that information out and bringing the information back. And they've been very instrumental in, in guiding all of those things. So, you know, they're not here, but I just want to express my appreciation for all that they do. It's a well-represented group from different areas of the facilities, and they bring a lot of feedback and continually help us get that.
Um, Dick, you're the rep on the committee. Anything you want to say?
Well, it's been a, you know, a difficult past few months, and I think everybody's reacted well to that. I, I'm impressed by the way things are being brought up to speed. And I'm just looking forward to seeing how things progress over the rest of the summer. So that's kind of where I'm at. We, we, we did have a meeting, what, a week ago, Dan?
Yeah.
And I, I sense some enthusiasm. People are kind of back and engaged, and let's see where it goes from here.
Alan, your question?
Yeah. Dan, is my memory correct that it wasn't that many years ago that you and others on the staff were talking about disbanding one or another advisory committee that related to sports and fitness? And I, it may not be this one, it may be another one or something related. And I'm curious, I remember being, saying that if they were dysfunctional, there are ways to make committees more functional, and I was challenged by Milton to go do that, but not really given that opportunity. I was wondering, has something changed? You, you described them as being very useful, and I'm glad to hear that, and I'm just wondering if the situation has improved, and I'd be pleased to hear that if it has.
Well, there's, there are two separate issues. One, we disbanded the, there was a, a committee of the chairs of all the other committees in sport and fitness. And that one was not being productive. So that one's, that's the one that was disbanded. We, a couple of years ago, we were, we were considering suspending or pausing the Health and Fitness Committee because participation was really low. Then we happened to luck into getting Jessica as our chair, brought some new energy back to the committee. The committee helped the staff recruit some new members, and yeah, now we have a vibrant, vibrant committee who's really engaged.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, I know that in, in terms of moving forward with different kinds of classes and things of that kind, particularly with tribes and some of the other things that you're doing now, some new initiatives. I, I guess I'm, I'm, there, there are two things here. One, in terms of the support that you're getting for some of these new initiatives, and also, what, what is the general age of, of this advisory committee? Are, are these folks of an age to take part in some of those newer classes and approaches that you've taken?
So, yeah, I mean, the, the, the age range of the, the committee is pretty diverse. You know, we have Jessica, who's a millennial. You know, we have Jessica, who's a millennial, all the way on up to, we have a couple of the tennis guys come. Leo comes, he should be on the call somewhere. Maybe he's waiting until later to represent the athletic club. So yes, we have a very diverse age-wise grouping and that really helps us with the program. What was the other question? You had two questions.
Well, I'm having a senior moment myself. If I think of it later, I'll put it out there.
Okay, any other questions for the Health and Fitness Advisory Committee? If not, thank you, Dan, and tell Jessica, hope everything goes well. And sorry she was not able to make it tonight.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move on to the International Multicultural Advisory Committee. And tonight we have Marcy Git with us. And Marcy, I want to thank you for coming out and give you an opportunity to say a few words.
I'd like to first comment that I think that our advisory committee and the multicultural programs really support the mission of Columbia Association. When I got in the mail this past week, there was a letter from Milton Matthews along with the COVID pandemic impact on programming. And it said that, that in FY21, they want to reflect CA's mission and vision, engage our diverse community, cultivate a unique sense of place and enhance quality of life. And CA creates and supports solutions to meet the evolving needs of a dynamic and inclusive community. Diversity and inclusivity are the main goals and mission of our programs. We accomplished a lot with our advisory committee, which consists of 22 volunteers, many of whom have been on the committee for five, six, seven, eight years. I myself have been on the committee for almost nine years. So we have a dedicated group and we also supervise or advise the five sister cities committees for the five countries that Columbia now has, China, Spain, France, Ghana, and Haiti. We had a lot of programs this year that attracted many, many hundreds of people. We had over 100 people per month coming to the Language Cafe, which we have 19 table hosts who are fluent in languages that come together and support people who want to learn languages. To me, it really evokes for me the spirit of what Columbia is about when I sit in that room and I see a Korean American teaching the Spanish cable and an African American learning, trying to learn Mandarin with the Chinese cable. I just always feel so proud of living here. And I want to, I think our programs are really important to continue to support that diversity, especially in the challenging times that we're in now. We did an Asian Lunar New Year celebration at the mall with hundreds of people dropping by. We've done cooking classes from our sister city committees. We got into a new area this year where we had screenings of a documentary called Black on Black, dealing with the challenges between the African American community and the more recent immigrant communities. We had a number of screenings and discussions. As always, we had our French and Spanish high school exchange last summer, where we had nine teenagers from Columbia go to France and 12 to Spain for three weeks. And then those students came back and spent three weeks with their American families. And those programs have been going on since, if you can believe it, 1977 for France. And we have many alums of those programs telling us that it was really a life-changing experience. We had another group, a second group, go to China on a tour of China. That was an adult tour and spent three days in our sister city in China. That's been a very exciting relationship. They also sent 15 Chinese students here last summer. They spent a week in classes at Howard Community College. So we have a lot of collaborative efforts going on with other groups, organizations, buildings throughout Columbia. And another benefit to us with our relationship with China was that in March, when the pandemic hit, they sent 4,000 masks that they donated to Columbia Association, which were then spread out between open space, the Office of Emergency Management, the Food Bank, and M95 masks that were donated that went to the hospitals. So we see a lot of mutual caring in the purpose of sister cities is to promote citizen-to-citizen diplomacy. And that's something we really need as well. It is a time when our politics, our political diplomacy is not as strong. So we were, we were right in the middle of planning all the things like that that we're going to be happening again this summer in 2021. Had all our French and Spanish students signed up to go this summer, had another group ready for an exchange with China. But once the pandemic hit, all those things were canceled. Not only did our staff, one and a half employees were furloughed, but obviously nobody was traveling anywhere anymore or any groups. So it's been very sad and devastating to all of us. And we realize that those, no matter whether we get our staff back or not, we can't do the same kind of programming. Hopefully, maybe next summer, 2021, we'll be able to do those things again. But meanwhile, we feel there are many challenges ahead with continuing to support the multicultural communities in Howard County and in Columbia. And our committee will try to work as hard as we can with our volunteers to do whatever we can think of without staff and funds. But we really appreciate the board supporting as much as they can to try to have these positions brought back when it's feasible. Laura Schmidt, our program manager, is going to be retiring by the end of this year. So that means hiring a new person. She's been a dynamic leader and will be hard to replace her energy level. We appreciate that the board has supported us a lot. Renee Dubois has come to many of our meetings. We're looking forward to Alan Klein being our new board rep. Alan and DeBoltan were on our first diplomatic trip to China when we opened our sister city there. So we hope that they've experienced how life-changing these opportunities can be.
Alan, some questions?
Yeah, I was going to say I really enjoyed our time together, Marcy, and your presence on that trip. I've asked this before and I'll probably keep asking, and you sort of alluded to it a little bit. In the past, the Multicultural Committee has been very nicely focused on multicultural as defined, that I might define as cross-cultural information, learning about other cultures, learning sister cities, the fairs and those kinds of things that learn about other cultures. And that certainly does relate to Columbia's diversity goals. And there's a part that it doesn't, at least as far as I'm concerned, which is about, more about what we tend to think of as diversity and inclusion, diversity, equity, and inclusion in this country and others. How do people get along with others who are different? And how do I understand how to do that and so on? The black and black film sort of gets a part of that, but it still relates to international. So my question is, do you think that the committee has any, would ever have any interest or bandwidth to include that aspect of diversity slash multiculturalism in its portfolio? Or if we wanted a committee that would help advise us on diversity and inclusion in Columbia, would we, would we need to set up another advisory committee?
I think that we have a large network of volunteers and people who've been interested in our programs who could be pulled in to do that. And I think we were stepping a little bit more into the more challenging areas with that black and black documentary. And I would like us to do more of that. We've had a group come forward from the Korean American community and from the Indian American community and in the Columbia Howard County area that want to be more involved with us. And so I think that, I think those roles would be appropriate and challenging to take on and kind of help us to have another mission in an era when we can't particularly travel or gather in large groups. So I would only be concerned that how we would get that accomplished if we don't have the the jobs replaced, because I don't take a lot of energy for our committee just with volunteers to try to tackle that.
Absolutely. And the times and the awarenesses in the country certainly are pointing to a greater willingness to engage in these things. So thank you.
Yes.
Jenny?
Yeah, when you're talking about staff, you had one and a half staff and the board had approved another half of staff, right? So you would have had two staff, except for all the need to cut back. How many, how many hours per week could you function with?
Well, we functioned, we functioned for a long time with Laura Schmidt's full-time position. I think.
Was that 40 hours a week?
Yes, uh-huh. She's, yes, she's 40 hours a week. I think that we would have to, if we were not replacing the other halftime person, we would really have to think about how to get a lot of the administrative work taken care of that so that, because that really allowed Laura to do a lot more program development and a lot more community engagement because she wasn't so caught up in all the multi, multitude of administrative details that are involved in all these things.
So you're talking about, you're talking about one and a half staff where the board actually approved your existing one and a half plus another half. So you're saying you can do it with maybe one for sure, maybe another half. You don't need the other half. In other words, you don't.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have it. Yes. I think we would be thrilled if we could keep our one and a half. But I understand, you know, obviously we can do more with more people.
Okay, thank you.
Renee, do you have anything you want to say? Marcy, just one question for you. The book club, is, did that go online?
Yes, it went online as well as did the, if you can believe them, the World Language Cafe. We were trying to do that online too. But we were, Laura was instructed that she, since she's furloughed, that she can't run that anymore. So those aren't going on.
Okay. Thank you. And the last question is for Marcy. If not, thank you very much, Marcy. Appreciate you coming and talking to us.
Okay.
Okay, next up, we have the Millennial Advisory Committee. And Jessica is actually here tonight to talk to us. Jessica, you want to give us a few words and?
Hey, everyone. So I am the liaison for the Millennial Advisory Committee. We are the youngest committee for CA, I believe. We really got rolling around August or September last year. So we haven't even had a full year of meeting yet. And I included in our report to you sort of what we tackled. By design, our committee had some members who were part of CA and some people who had actually never really heard of CA. So we spent a lot of time doing education to get a lot of the different perspectives out into the community, mostly because a lot of the millennials who moved to Columbia have to be educated about who CA is. They've never lived here before. And so we did that by bringing in directors from different departments, including Dan and Communications and Marketing, to come speak to them about issues that pertain to the charges you'd asked them to do. And then we also started meeting, every time we had an in-person meeting, we tried to meet at different facilities that CA has so that we can include tours and education. So that's a little bit of what we did this year. We provided a lot of direct feedback for the Party in the Park event, which was one that Communication and Marketing designed to sort of target some of the recommendations from the report committee, not this one. And then the proposed charges that we're submitting for next year are similar to the, are essentially the exact same ones that you assigned to us for last year. But we have broken off into subcommittees to really tackle four specific recommendations from that report. And we'll actually be having our quarterly meeting next week. So we'll see where the subcommittees have been and kind of reporting back to you guys on that. Were there any questions?
So Jessica, a question for you, for the people who had basically never heard of CA. Any, do you like summarize their reaction after they found out about?
We, it was interesting because clearly everyone who wanted to join this committee had finally heard about CA, which is why they decided to sign up. But they remembered what it was like to move here and to not know. And a lot of them did it when they were looking for a sport and fitness club. And that's when they discovered what CA was because, or they moved on to a CAS property and received the annual assessment charge. And so a lot of their first introduction were these kind of more practical or administrative like experiences with CA. And so, you know, we've actually had a lot of like little mini recommendations that the committee has come up with. A lot of that, like how CA markets itself, how we educate the public about who we are. And so we're hoping that, you know, one of their recommendations they're going to focus on is actually coming up with like a list of recommendations of like how you speak to newcomers, because it won't just be millennials who are newcomers to Howard County. But this is the segment that has a lot of movement. So they're good at speaking for that group.
Shari?
You're muted, Shari.
Oops, sorry. Yeah, it's been really, really interesting working with this group. There's so much potential energy there. But I think one of the things that really came up is the need for a greater social media presence. I think we've heard that many, many times in many different ways. And so I think that's, that's something that I'm sure we're going to be getting a group working, working on that. The other issue that came up that was so interesting is on affordable housing. And that is a very practical, but far-reaching visioning type of thing that ties into our strategic planning. So, you know, the, the social media is very concrete, but the affordable housing is a much bigger kind of chunk, but something that we may want to visit or revisit in terms of our strategic planning. But I really want to thank Jessica for the way she's worked with this group. She gets, she gets accolades for how she has had the flexibility in, in working with the group where they are. So thanks, Jessica.
Okay, any questions for Jessica? If not, thank you, Jessica. Appreciate your coming out to represent the committee.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Okay, next up, we have the Senior Advisory Committee. And that will be Sharon Lee Vogel. Sharon Lee, are you there?
She was signed up someplace.
There, I couldn't unmute myself.
Ah, okay. Welcome, apparently. Would you like to have a, say a few words first and?
I'll say a few words, not a lot, because you've already gotten our report, including the details. the details on the attachment to it. The big things that are coming up in the next year for our charges, we need to update the plan for older adults that was created six years ago. Because we have accomplished, our CA has accomplished, many of those things. They're already done, and a few of them are ongoing. So we want to keep them going. We want to keep enhancing the programs, but we want to provide recommendations to you, especially about the 50-plus market, because that market segment is growing so fast. We are working with the county on the age-friendly community effort and how the two things can say, how CA can work with the county on that. And we, one of the big things that we have always had problems with is getting a representative from every single village in Columbia. And we had about eight of the ten. We can't seem to get somebody from River Hill. We haven't had a representative from River Hill probably in about seven years. And either Michelle Miller or I have talked to the village managers and talked about what the committee does. But we still don't have anybody. So, open for questions.
All right, well Janet is up first. Janet?
Yeah, hi Sharon Lee.
Hi.
I'm curious if, you know, if, if the group had done anything during COVID, and if so, if you feel like there may be some opportunities for additional virtual programming for the age, aging communities, you know, in the sense of like if there's bad weather or things like that, like if there, if there's anything sort of planned that might take advantage of, you know, increased awareness of the virtual availability.
Various members of the committee have helped share what CA has and what the Office on Aging has within our own community. And we are really ambassadors for CA out there because people, as the Millennial Committee reported, people just don't seem to know what CA does. And that is not necessarily something because they're young. It can be because they just never knew. And we see ourselves greatly as ambassadors to talk about what CA does. We have had a couple of Zoom meetings just to update each other, which I think is important. And then to continue sharing what we find out with our communities across the board. But I like your idea, and I'll bring it up to them.
Great, thank you.
Renee, did you have anything you wanted to?
Yes, I'm going to be the board liaison to the committee, and I happen to be from River Hill. So here I am.
Great, hello.
Bring it on.
Well, we, we welcome you when we have a meeting. And when I send out information for another's informal Zoom meeting, I'll be sure to include you so that you can sit in and hear what people are saying.
That would be great. And I will work with you to get somebody else from the village involved.
Thank you. We greatly appreciate that.
Of course.
We have representation on the Senior Advisory Committee from the village in Howard.
Okay.
Which actually, yes, which actually started in the Senior Advisory Committee. That's where it all started, was in our committee.
Okay.
Alan?
Yeah, I have a question I've been asking others. You're a board advisory committee, and is there anything the board or the staff could be doing differently or better that would help?
I think staff does a great job.
You give advice or take it, take your advice?
I think, the staff, and I think with Renee coming and wanting to come to our meetings, I hope she comes and then keeps coming and takes what we're saying back to the rest of the board. Because one thing that does come up probably every other meeting are the costs for participation in CA. There's a lot of resistance and displeasure about, well, I'm paying the lien, why do I have to pay to join to use the clubhouse, which I've already paid for in my lien?
Do you feel like you have an answer for that when that comes up?
We reported back that people don't like it. And I don't, I can't tell you what the solution is. But when you were getting.
Is there an answer which satisfies you, is what I'm saying?
Hmm, probably not. Because I pay the lien. I used to be a member and used it, but then I moved to a 50-plus community here in Columbia that has a gym and has a pool. Our pool is open, but our gym is not. Our clubhouse is not open. So the things that CA could provide me, I have right here on campus.
Thank you.
Sharon Lee, can you just talk for a moment about the status of the East Columbia, New East Columbia Senior Center?
Oh, that's a sore topic.
I can't figure it, but I'm not sure where, you know, the board knows where it stands.
Well, I was in that meeting, Jimmy, Jenny was in that meeting too. And they're talking about spending cost about seventy-two, seventy-three million dollars. And yet, there's no MOU in place. I am also, I'm president of the Howard County Arts Council. And until about a year and a half, two years ago, the Arts Council was going to be in the new cultural center. And no MOU was signed. And the issue that was very apparent was how is this going to be paid for? Because the Arts Council is really an organization that advocates and passes through funding. We do not generate a lot of money to support ourselves. And that's how Parks and Recs came in. Because they do have a business model, and they do have some ROI. But I have major questions on the funding. And in that presentation, I'm very concerned about four point two million dollars for the land alone. Because when you look at that kind of money and you compare it, you know, the last assessment that they had on the land alone was like a little over a million dollars. And when you look at areas nearby, such as the old WCI building that Clark developers built into the mixed-use building, that land, which is right downtown and right in the middle of everything, that building, which is what, a ten-story building, right now, I think, a much larger building than what the NCC is going to be, that has an estimated value of seventy-eight million dollars. And yet, they're proposing to spend seventy-three million on a building that is much smaller. So I've got major questions about the funding of this. And I don't know if the county can afford it.
Thanks, Sharon Lee.
Yeah, that's, that's the bad news.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Sharon Lee.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on then to the Teen and Middle School Advisory Committee. And we have, I think it's Zion Perkins. I apologize if I've missed your, pronounced your first name.
Good evening. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
This is Renee Buckman. I was.
Okay, hi Renee, sorry.
How are you? How is everyone? Good evening.
You really botched her name.
No, no, no. No, no, no. Zion is, is supposed to be on with us, but of course, he's en route, unless he's on the line now from work.
Oh, go ahead.
So Zion, are you on the line now? Okay, maybe he's not on the line. Okay, no, he's not on the, I just got a text. No, he's not on the line now. All righty. So we can move forward. I'm not quite sure what the format is because I didn't hear everyone's presentation. Do you have any questions for, for the Teen Advisory Committee?
Well, Marcy, the first thing we just asked is if there's anything, any quick highlights you want to give the board? And then we'll move on to any questions people have.
Okay, all righty. So the, the teen, the Teen and Middle School Advisory Committee, of course, are comprised of middle schoolers and high schoolers that reside in Columbia. And this past fiscal year, they were able to host the Middle School Takeover Supreme Sports Club, which is always a fun and well-attended event, and host two middle schools, I'm sorry, one middle school pool party and high school pool party last summer. The advisory committee's also very instrumental in helping to facilitate the Hear My Voice Teen Idol competition. They actually select or run the auditions, and then they run the day of the show when it, when it's being actually held. And then they also have, they were the ones that came up with the Friday Night Live concept. And this was pretty much an evening, talking to high schoolers to come out and just have a good time and fellowship. Most of the, the events that the Friday Night Live are theme-driven. And the last one they held was in January of 2020. We, we also like to try and provide some type of enrichment for, for these teens. And they were able to attend a conference called Champions for Change. And it was hosted by the local children's board, which is the Department of the Community Resources and Services. And they were able to attend a couple of workshops on crisis response, racial equality, collective impact, and community engagement. And they also were able to share what, what the teen center does and, and share programs and activities with the attendees. And then, and then COVID happened. All right.
So any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to ask my standard question. As you think of how, how your committee has been used by CA over the past year, is there anything that we as a board or the staff could be doing to better facilitate the committee's work, to better position us to be able to use your advice, or, and to give your advice?
Yes. I think, you know, and Zion and I chatted this morning, but we, we think that if the board members had other resources or were apprised of any opportunities that the teens could get involved in, that would be very helpful. But also helping to just get the word out, you know, we, we do our, our advertising through our, our marketing department. But it all, word of mouth is a big thing. So if we're doing something for the community and we are sending the board members the information, it's always helped to have them support our events by letting just the people that they know attend.
Thank you.
Jess?
Hey, I, a quick question. So I think I'm supposed to be the representative for this committee now. Is that correct? I think that's sort of a general question. But also, are, are you guys meeting at this time? Are you doing anything virtually? What's going on now during the pandemic? How has that impacted you?
Right. Well, normally, this committee usually was on hiatus during the summer months because the kids go on hiatus during the summer months.
Gotcha.
And they get back together during the school year. But I'm quite sure with, with the announcement now of school going virtually for the, the first half of the, the year, school year, we will be getting together sooner to just kind of discuss where, you know, where we go from here.
Okay. If you could keep me apprised of when that happens, you know, that would be wonderful. And I can participate and maybe share some resources that might be useful to the kids as they sort of navigate the pandemic and the, the fun stuff that goes along with it.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Marcy. And thank you very much. And appreciate your coming out tonight to talk with us.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
And next, we're on to the Tennis Committee. Leo Burritt, Leo, are you there?
Yes, I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes. Leo, welcome. If you'd just like to give a couple highlights, and then we'll open it up for questions from the board.
Okay. Well, certainly, it's a unique and challenging time in which we live. Many ways, it's pretty tragic. Tennis facilities, as you know, are open. Some of them, they're open. Some folks are playing. I can tell you that me and about another dozen and a half folks I know, probably not going to do anything until there's a vaccine. So as an overview out there, the tennis community, which is, in previous years, has been something on the order of seven, eight, nine thousand participants for league play, social play, juniors, et cetera. The gamut of who's out playing and not playing is kind of like a stockbroker who would sit with clients and evaluate their tolerance for risk. We, we've got the entire spectrum. That said, we certainly appreciate that Hobbit's Glen went through spring maintenance, is back up to speed. Courts five and six, especially Court Six, is absolutely marvelous from what I've seen. We know that Courts One and Four are scheduled for overhaul at some point in the future. Under the current circumstances with the budget shortfall, we, I, anyway, recognize that that might be deferred at some point. Other than that, I mean, we got, before things shut down, we got a USTA Mid-Atlantic Facility Award for the Long Reach Tennis Center. That, that's, that's a fantastic facility. I mean, that thing with maintenance and care, I mean, that's going to be around for the next fifty years. I mean, it's, I really, really, really like that facility, as, as does everyone else I know that's used it. So I thanked you last year. I'll thank you again. Other than that, USTA League Play, completely shut down. There might be some league play starting end of July, maybe in the fall. And I go back to what I mentioned about some of us are, are playing and some of us are not playing. Who can say? We're, we're not going to be back to any kind of definition of normality, probably until next year. But I'm, I'm sure preaching to the choir here. That said, I would ask, what can we do for you? I mean, y'all have got your hands full. I know you've had to revise the budget two or three times, and you may have to do it some more.
Thanks, Leo. Any questions for Leo? No, it sounds like, no question.
That's incredible.
I know.
Absolutely no questions whatsoever.
Wait, maybe Nancy raised her hand?
[laughing]
Nancy? Nancy?
I just wanted to thank you, Leo, because I think you're doing a great job leading this group.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're...
Andy?
Yes, Jenny?
Dick, you don't have any pickleball questions? I guess Dick's not listening.
No, I, I, I won't talk down on pickleball.
I was saying pickleball courts, you know, and Owen Brown are very nice.
I'm kidding, guys. I'm kidding.
Yeah, I'm not going to go there. I'm on that pickleball committee too, and...
I know, I know.
It's, hey, when my knees don't work anymore, I will play pickleball. Until then, I'm playing tennis. Sorry.
Nice, good response, Leo.
Thank you, Leo.
That's called candor.
Okay. Last one we have is the Watershed Advisory Committee. And unfortunately, I did not get a name. Dennis, do we have someone from the Watershed Advisory Committee?
We don't have Dennis either.
So, hi, this is Susan. I talked to Dennis this morning. So the Watershed Advisory Committee Chair was not able to make it, and they did not complete their report in time. And they're another committee where the staff support is a challenge, because the main staff person is 100% furloughed, and the backup staff person just had her first baby, so she's not available either. But they are looking to update their charges and get a report to you guys in September when she comes back, and hopefully the furlough period will be over.
All right, thanks, Susan. Shari, do you have anything to say, because?
Yeah. This committee meets every other month. So there is a meeting scheduled for next month, which is why I think this particular hour meeting today did not really fit what the pattern has been for the meeting. The group has been very committed to looking at all of the watershed projects. I think there is some concern, obviously, and understanding about why the capital budget is just not going to be able to move ahead with the projects that are sort of lined up in the queue. Having said that, a CA staff has done just a great job in partnering over the years with the county to get many of these very expensive remediation projects done, the stormwater management projects. And I think if we were ever able to get a presentation at a CA board meeting so that people could see the before and after of these projects, it would be very, very impressive. John McCoy has just been terrific to work with over the years, and he gets super-high ratings from this committee. We do have representatives from every village. I think Keane's Contrivance just has a new member coming on, which I hope everybody will vote in, I think, as of our next meeting. She's got great experience with the watershed stewards. So these are the folks that really are out there doing a lot of weed pulling. They're doing a lot of environmental work. And I think working together with the Sustainability Committee has been really great. So, you know, again, it's a real pleasure to work with this group. And again, without necessarily the funding that can go in traditionally, I think there are a lot of other educational projects that people are undertaking in the villages that really talk about watershed issues. And I think that, you know, this educational perspective is something that they will continue to push within this next year. They're also concerned about the stream erosion. And we never finalized a policy, but I think that it's something that the group will be helping us with as we're looking forward. So if there's any questions, I can answer whatever.
Jenny has a question.
Yeah, my concern is that this boy just approved Bob from Oakland Mills, who's fantastic. And I'm just wondering if the new people, like, you know, your person and Bob, will get notified about the committee, be welcomed since John's not there, you know, and told when the meetings will be, et cetera.
Yeah, I think Deborah, I'll be in touch with her prior to this August meeting. And there's a lot that the group does on Facebook. So I think whether this next one is going to be virtual or how exactly it's going to be set up, I'm not entirely sure, but that's what we'll be working on.
Is Deborah the staff person?
Yes.
Oh, the chair, the chair?
Yes.
From Wilder?
Yeah, yeah. She's been the chair for many years. Yeah, yeah, great. All right, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That completes all our advisory committees. So I want to thank the board for turning out tonight, and we'll see you next week. So thank you very much, and good evening. We'll adjourn the meeting here at 8:37.